... I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Florisville City Council, regular scheduled meeting for July the 26th at 6:00 PM. Can everybody hear? I can hear up here, but I don't think they can hear out there. Hold on. Okay. Um, following the meeting of the Florisville City Council meeting for July the 26th. And I hope you can see. Just raise your hand when you can start to hear. I'll keep talking until everybody can hear something.
Well, keep on hearing. Keep on hearing. But you're reacting.
Earlier you were. You didn't have a meeting.
Nobody's talking about next door. People are dropping metal on the floor.
Down there, sir. Okay, the micro, uh, any speakers working as of now?
No. They were working. Mr. Riley, how many of them on the floor? One of them? Did we just wax those floors?
Okay, are we having any luck with speakers? Uh, okay, great, thank you. So, we do have our regular scheduled meeting of the Florisville City Council. It's now 6:02. I could call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for our invocation and we are honored to have Pastor Eric Naves as our pastor.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Please join us while our prayer will begin.
(Inaudible) in the flag of three United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one in the Father.
Thank you. At this time, I open the floor to any citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for any citizen to speak to our council. If you're asked to come up to our podium and be allowed five minutes for any concerns that you might have regarding my city. And if you would state your name, we can keep a barman.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. My name is Victor Wade. I'm, uh, new to the area. Uh, my wife and I just moved here recently to Florisville. And, uh, wherever I live, I try to stay a little bit involved and, and concerned about the city where I live and operations and things. When I moved to Florisville, I kept hearing people talk about the financial problems. But I, you know, I don't know that much about it. Uh, but, uh, you know, I had multiple folks, even when I wouldn't bring it up, they said that they felt like there was financial problems. And I know, you know, I just like to live in a place that's strong financially. If you're strong financially, you last and the home values stay up, your property values stay up. That's my concern, is having a strong community. It just helps the whole community when you're financially, uh, in a good financial position. You know, I've even had somebody tell me a day or two ago that they had moved out of Florisville and weren't going to come back until the finances got back in order. Uh, I did come and talk to the city secretary a day or two ago and got the annual financial report. And I noticed under the financial highlights, it says, "As a result of the negative financial position of the city's general fund, the city of Florisville implemented zero-based budget policy." Policy of documents that city officials and administration should be three main goals to return the city, return the city to financial stability. That, I feel like that is very, very important. Uh, highlighting return. So, I mean, there, recently it must have been in good shape. I don't know what, where the problem is. Uh, the next bullet point is improve the efficiency and effectiveness of operations and then establish best-in-class management policy and procedures. Uh, it goes on a little bit more with some other things, but I think those three bullet points are the most important. But my concern would be that it says, uh, that the city officials and administration are trying to achieve these goals. I would just like to emphasize that we need to stay, um, to work on that and make sure that it doesn't get on the back burner and become something that folks have just forgotten about and hey, let's, you know, what happens? You get in this kind of, in a financial problem. I think what happened to, it looks like to me, those money had come out of the general fund to help stabilize the financial position of the city. I'm not sure, I'm not that good at reading all these financial reports, you know, it's about twenty pages of that stuff, but, um, I just feel like that that needs to be something that every day we're working on to stay financially afloat. You start getting into debt and the next thing you know, you can't pay the, the interest on your note, you become weak and, and, and property values drop and it, it hurts everybody. So, just a thought.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wade. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Dennis Thompson. I live in the county. However, I am being considered for annexation tonight. I understand and fully expect to eventually be annexed, but I would like to express my desire that I'm annexed into a city which is financially sound. And to that issue, I am addressing my speech tonight. You individually are aware that each of you have a financial fiduciary responsibility. It's a very serious responsibility. The question for you to ask tonight before you vote whether to annex any area, what will you leave as your legacy? You won't always be an official here in this city. Will your legacy be one of leaving the city better than you found it financially or worse? The reputation's all deferred, the past councils and past mayors and the now fees and stuff has occurred, we're not going to get into that, but you have the opportunity as a new council, a governing body today, to exercise judgment, prudence, financial responsibility. Right now, unfortunately, I read in the papers, the reserve for Florisville is at zero. That means, in my mind, we have no savings whatsoever for any unforeseen expenses. Anything that's not budgeted, anything you may want to do to help people, you can't because you don't have a reserve. If the economy tanks next month, six months from now, and the income is suddenly reduced, what are you going to do? Until the reserve is refunded in full, I don't see how you can really afford to even consider annexing any section which is not immediately profitable. And this is not a slight against any section which is not profitable immediately, but from what I can see, the projections for some of the areas that are to be considered are years before the investment for, uh, the infrastructure is returned. I don't have to tell you all the numbers, you know the numbers, but the question for each of you tonight, what will your individual legacies be and your effect on the city during their term? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other citizens' comments?
Another question. Both is ninety and eighty.
Yes, he said Dennis Thompson.
Vince, Vince.
Dennis Thompson. Sorry. Dennis Thompson.
And whatever it is.
He is right across from John here, John here.
He too, he's right at the board.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. If not, I will be moving on to the mayor's message. And I did not re-plan this, but it is regards to the audit of 2016 and '17 that we just completed. And these weeks and months with meeting with auditors and each department within the city shines a bright light on the efficiencies and the inefficiencies of the city and gives us as a council the opportunity to fix what is definitely broken. As mayor, my job is limited. I am forced to trust the process of those who have been hired to oversee the inner workings of our city. However, part of my job is also to listen to complaints, and I do get those. I hear complaints of potholes, stray dogs, overgrown lots, and the all common complaints a mayor could expect. But I also hear complaints of city staff not answering or returning phone calls, as well as overspending and general management issues. It is my duty to bring these to light and to inform the council and the public of these complaints as they, that, because they are this city that we represent. The results of the 2016-'17 audit have shed a light on the validity of what I've been hearing. We have overspending across multiple departments throughout the city, including improperly allocated funds, double-paid invoices, and an inability to maintain proper accounting practices throughout the year. Again, I reiterate that this is the budget of 2016 and '17. City council relies on key personnel, including the city manager and comptroller, to maintain city finances in accordance with the operating budget. For the past two audits, we have heard that the finance department has been unable to keep up with accounting practices, including monthly account reconciliation, which would help prevent some of the issues that we run into. This not only opens a pathway for mistakes such as those we found in our audit, but it also severely limits the council's ability to make sound financial decisions when the books are not properly managed for such a long period of time. Moreover, when the time for budgeting comes, just like we have right now, we are just getting caught up with the last year's finances. As city manager, Mrs. Turner, is tasked with working with each department to devise a new budget to bring to council. This can be a very tough task when financials are out of date or unreconciled. As a side note, the council did approve the hiring of a full-time bookkeeper to help in getting caught up with the records. So, our goal is that the next audit should not have such major issues. Now, getting back to the audit at hand, of the $480,000 over budget, $200,000 of it could very well have been budgeted if properly presented. We found, I did, I found $97,000 in over budget in salary spending, $35,000, $34,000 overspent on our website, $22,000 in unemployment, and $36,000 in excess in our liability insurance budget. While we might not be able to plan for unemployment spending, we can certainly plan for salaries, a planned project like our new website, and liability insurance rates. None of these were properly planned for, so the city suffers when these expenses come up. We find that the other half of overspending in departments in the 2016-'17 budget is not uncommon. Our police department over budgeted by $72,000 happens, and that happens when unplanned overtime to cover for natural disasters or to assist other departments in an emergency situation, just like we saw in Southern Springs. Then there are legal fees and equipment costs. We have increased our budgeting efforts in the police department to help with some of those rising costs of equipment. In a similar light, the municipal court seeks losses each year. This is kind of natural in this particular case. A majority of the fees we collect in the court go straight to the state before we receive our cut, and our cut is not that much. And we do have a municipal court report this evening. This on top of folks who don't pay their fines just creates an environment that is nearly impossible to turn a profit in. Coupled with fading technology that needed replacing, it resulted in a $78,000 over budget in municipal court. Other departments over budget include streets and the city pool at $83,000 and $39,000 respectively. All of these items are being very well reviewed thoroughly during our budget workshops for the next fiscal year. This is not a comprehensive list of budget items that are overspent. As I mentioned, there was a total of $484,000 spent over the amount that was planned for 16-'17, a budget that most of the members of this council, council rather, had no hand in writing. On a positive note, we brought in over $240,000 more in projected revenue, an amount that could have changed the entire direction of our city's financial status had we stayed within budget. This year's proposed zero-budget, based budget process will help curb overspending. However, we have to stress to the council that we need to be supplied accurate and up-to-date financial statements. If not, the council is unable to be productive and change the course, cannot happen. City council cannot accept best guess answers as they clearly do not work, accurate quotations for known expenses such as insurance policies or what I mentioned earlier. Now, the reason for this message tonight has been that some people have pointed fingers about overspending during that fiscal year in Florisville. The council needs to study and find, uh, find understandings of all budget items. What looks good on paper is not always best for the city of Florisville. And I thank you very much.
Could I say something?
Yes.
With all due respect, you forgot to mention, Mayor, that a big chunk of our money went to the consultant. When we hired the consultant to fire the chief of police, that wasn't on the budget. Also, these partitions that are right here, that wasn't on the budget. We all received about five or six shirts that wasn't on the budget, and those shirts were very expensive. And that was just, those are just things that are up on my head that just pop up. I'm sure there's a lot more that was not on the budget.
My response to that is that the $37,000 for the police department, I have, I am not, I do not regret that whatsoever, and the contract services.
Excuse me, one word. We're not arguing.
Okay. All right. I will just leave it there, but that was my remarks, and that was Councilwoman Cantu's remarks as well.
Let's move on.
Okay, moving on to our next item, I'd like to introduce, as many people here in the audience know, that there has been a change in the leadership in the Florisville Electric Light and Power, and I would like to introduce our interim general manager of Phelps, Mr. Mike Finnell.
Thank you, Mayor. My name, as she said, is Mike Finnell. I have been with Phelps for three years as senior manager of construction and managed prior to becoming interim GM on Monday. Uh, I'd like you to know that there is a good future for Phelps financially and in employee satisfaction, and especially if they're a customer service. As interim manager, there's only so much I can do. My job is to sustain the course until a permanent GM is assigned. Now, it's his tenement, it's not me, to force my ability to make Phelps financially, as you know, the three owner cities depend heavily on income from my company, and my intention is to keep that positive, good for the cities. If you ever have any questions, please reach out to me. Uh, I can be reached at eight three zero. Completely forgot the number. Seven seven four, two thousand, my session is two seven two.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to you.
Ma'am?
Your name, I didn't get to.
Mike Finnell. F-I-N-N-E-L-L.
Yes, if you move your microphone closer.
Uh, my question is to you, uh, and I'm going to hand it over to our city manager, so that I wish you could ask him the question. Does it, the Phelps manager that we previously talked about manager was, had quoted that they were going to help us do a courthouse electrical system on there, and we needed something for a Christmas tree?
Uh, yes. Dwayne just was going to walk us through, uh, the courtyard at the courthouse, and there are quite a few of things, and so he conceded a lot of the children's tree, and he talked about replacing some of those, uh, most of the outlets actually, and had made sure that they have a GFI to them, and he wanted, you know, trees on the way, so.
Yes, ma'am. I am aware. I was actually with Mr. Blue two weeks ago, meeting with an electrical contractor, and I am waiting to hear back from you.
I think so, Mr. T, you got lost.
Any other questions, show Mr. Finnell.
Well, you ate your hands, so. All right. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to old business, item two A, consideration action to approve minutes meetings for the regular council meeting of July 12, 2018.
Miss Mira, I found the mistake on, on the, on the, on item three B, where it says, uh, one man told where it says, uh, councilman has made a motion to approve, and councilman has seconded the vote.
Mark, are you ready? So, are you going to second the motion?
Yes, councilman Ortiz has seconded.
Mike, hold your hand.
I can look on you. I was here that meeting. I can look on my. I was here for that meeting, Mayor, um, so I can look on my, release this note, and double check.
Okay. Before you sign, if you all approve it with correction. Okay. Counsel, if you have any other corrections you want to make?
I'm making a motion to approve the corrections.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes with that one correction by Councilwoman Cantu. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilwoman Nissen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. That was five zero. Moving on to our presentation, we do have Gigi Langford here of the downtown revitalization grant program and the application process.
Thank you, your name. Uh, this is Langford, please from Austin. And so the first item of business under new business, if you care to take the action unless you present that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I would really appreciate that. Thank you. Good evening, Council. Um, so, I'm Gigi Langford, like community management services. We've been working with the city with a number of grants the city has, has received. And tonight, what's in front of you is downtown revitalization, which is a Texas community development block grant, uh, application. Uh, the cities, they have several different ones. The city has, uh, just paid in several of those programs. This one actually does sidewalks for the downtown area, and it's a $250,000 grant. And to get the full score, because they're, they're very competitive and they're a statewide application for non-entitlement communities, which are communities under 50,000 or counties under 200,000 that have a low and moderate income rate of greater than 51%, in which the city of Florisville does. So, to receive the full points for it, basically a $75,000 match, I understand that the EDC has agreed to match, to cover most of that match at this point. So, the, um, applications are due on October 31st, and looking at potentially doing the downtown area on Third and C Street. So, if any of the constituents in all of those areas contact you, because we will be talking to them if the council moves forward with hiring us, is that we need at least 51% of the, um, store owners or the building owners to give letters of support. So, we will be reaching out to them, and so if they come to you and say, "Did you know that they're going to be contacting me?" You'll know that that's what it's for, and it's part of the application, and it's part of the scoring criteria. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the program. Any questions?
When you say Third and C, is that the whole Third Street?
It's the block, it's the, it's going to be, this amount of money will likely cover basically from the intersection of C and Third, a block each direction. So, it's basically an X. Yes, ma'am?
So, it would be from, um, Third Street?
It'll be on C Street from Fourth, from Second to Fourth.
Okay.
And, and Third Street from D to B. And if there's any additional money, then it will go, it'll just continue north until it reaches that maximum amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. When do we start the, uh, everything process? When do we start the engineers involved?
Well, the council will have to go forward with hiring an engineer to put together the cost estimates for the application, which will start immediately, but it will be done on a, with funding process because we would not perform within actually doing any design until the point in which you're funded.
And those fees would come from?
Within the grant and the match. Yes, sir.
So, they, they'll probably charge us again 15%.
Well, it is a procurement process that we have to go through, as I headed over to hire a coordinator. You have to advertise and ads and send, and then we have to select an engineer. The last time we did the procurement process, Councilwoman Nissen, participating, we have staff involved as well as an official. We didn't get those grants that we went for, but it's a procurement process. And so, once you all select a consultant to do that, then we can go forward with the application, start the selection process for an engineer company, so that we can do so, uh, just do it at the end of October, if I'm correct.
That's right.
And so, there's a lot of different things we have to do and have in place to put this application forward, but this was one of my directives that the council gave me to go forward.
Yes, and I, and I would say, I hope that when this, uh, grant goes through, because I visited and kind of took the struggle, and it's, it's, it's pretty nice.
Well, thank you. That was my hard projects.
Pardon?
That was my hard projects. So, I appreciate that, yes, sir. So, um...
That's how that started, if that happened in my mind. I want to, uh, be personally manager and council. Thank you very much.
So, I appreciate that, and, and so even though it says just sidewalks, it's not just sidewalks, it's making your sidewalks being accessible, so that you'll have a lot of high sidewalks, as you well know. And so, we bring in, um, any grants at the ends of the intersection so that folks in that have challenges will be able to get along the sidewalks.
I want to say, uh, that I have a wife that is, you see, and we go to this, uh, doctor there, right, uh, right, uh, and we have patients, you know, and, uh, unfortunately, but struggling, and, and, and others, and, and hopefully council will support this, you know, specifically for, for the tire, you know, unfortunately, that.
Okay. Awesome. Great.
How much do you think this is going to cost the city? You know, five, ten, so?
Well, we certainly anticipate trying to save, we can save the budget, so right now, it's a $50,000 grant with a $75,000 match with $50,000 already pledged by the EDC to match on the project.
So, it would be $25,000, too?
It's, it's potentially $25,000, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The $25,000, that's, it could be in kind for it.
Okay.
The $25,000 could be in kind, or is it?
It could be, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, if the, can I run for the application is October 31st? Yes, ma'am. What is the timeline to, to, when they, sorry, what is the timeline? They don't, they don't tell us exactly when, but I can tell you, it would be generally two, three months to inform the application. By the time they review them, score them, and they let people know that they're funded, generally within October 31, or in the coming January, maybe February, the agency's kind of slowing down during the holidays, so I believe it'll be first next year. What was the total on a grant you planned for? $250,000.
And you figure out, or anybody who looks at how many linear feet that's going to take care of, or is this going to be the corners?
It will do the sidewalks as well. It will do the corners and the sidewalks.
So, the whole down now?
No, sir. Just along the area we just talked about, but the linear feet... Two hundred fifty thousand.
And you figured out, or anybody, how many, let your feet test, or take care of, or is this going to be the corners?
It will do the sidewalks as well, it will do the corners and the sidewalks.
So, the whole downtown?
No, sir, just along the area we just talked about, but the linear feet, um, I haven't answered them, I apologize, but it would be, it'll be basically, again, the road, uh, it'll be on C Street from second to fourth, which is two C blocks that direction, then it would be third street, from B Street to B Street, which is another two C blocks.